Okay, we'll start the City of North St. Paul's City Council Special Meeting for October 26. Jenny, if you could, nope, we'll do the roll after the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the plague are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Jenny, if you take the roll?
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here. Quorum is present. Motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
By Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. We do have a public hearing. I'll turn over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. The public hearing is the special assessment hearing for unpaid bills and authorizing the City of North St. Paul to certify to the county auditor's office all unpaid fees. Turn that over to you, Dan.
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers. This is an annual process to identify the unpaid utilities for the City of North St. Paul. This is the public hearing. After the public hearing, if it's approved, the residents who have outstanding balances have until November 29th to pay them without any interest. After that, they'll be certified to Ramsey County to be put onto their property taxes for next year on their property tax bill. I know a question that had come up in our last council member was, you know, what are we doing as far as reaching individuals of diversity? I think in certain ways, we haven't addressed that or done a very good job. But CARRY is currently looking at, it's called Civic Ready, which is a software tool that we could use that could have some great benefits for the city as far as communication, where a resident can go out and sign up to be a part of this communication tool, and it will allow them to do, I can't remember how many different languages that they can choose to be able to have communication given to them. It even has a GIS built into it where you could actually circle a certain jurisdiction and area in the City of North St. Paul, and communication would go out to just that area. Some of the applications that it could be used for would be for utility notices. It can be used for our police department in notification for neighborhood watch. It could be utilized by our public works department for looking at giving notification to residents when they're going to be in certain areas, or when there's a utility outage or so forth. So it's something that we're vetting right now. The department has, will review it coming up in the upcoming weeks, and it'll be something that'll be brought and introduced to the city council. But to me, that's our vehicle to kind of start to do a better job on addressing and communication for the residents regarding their utility bills more than we've done So with this, there's actually four resolutions.
What I'll do, I'll open the public hearing up.
Okay.
And then probably close it right away because it won't be, but I'll open the public hearing up at 5:06. Do I need a motion for that to open the public hearing? I don't remember if I, I don't think so. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in regards to this? Is there anybody on Zoom? Do we know if there's anybody there?
Um, no. There is nobody on Zoom.
Okay. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Make it 5:07. And at this time then, I will, any questions for the Finance Director? I guess the question I have is, how come there's a, it's probably trivial, but there's a difference in interest rates between a couple of different ones. One's at 6%, one's at 10%.
10%, yeah.
Is there a reason why there's a difference between?
Yeah, it is actually dictated by statute on the different type of utility that's there, what interest rate to charge.
Okay.
Yep. There is another difference this year. There's actually four resolutions because we are actually, we were asked by the City of Oakdale, who provides some water to the residents of North St. Paul that are delinquent. I think they have two properties to actually certify for them because it'll go on to Ramsey County, because Ramsey County is the home auditor for North St. Paul versus Oakdale. It's kind of one of those crossovers. So there is a fourth resolution this year, which has not been done in the past.
Okay. So the first resolution I have is Resolution approving assessment to properties for unpaid water, wastewater, environmental utility, streetlights, solid waste, and recycling for our North St. Paul properties. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second one is the Resolution approving assessment to properties for unpaid water, wastewater, environmental utility, and recycling for Maplewood Properties. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third one is Resolution approving assessments to properties for 2020/2021 nuisance abatements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the fourth one is Resolution approving assessment of properties for unpaid water, wastewater, environmental utility, streetlights, solid waste, and recycling for North St. Paul properties billed by the City of Oakdale. Is there a motion for that?
So.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Turn over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. First item under City Business Action Items and Recommendations is selection of City Manager Finalists to be interviewed. And I'll turn that over to Mark with David Drowne Associates.
Welcome, Mark.
Mark.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As Brian mentioned.
Brian mentioned, I am Mark Casey. I work for David Drowne Associates, and we have the honor of doing your search for your next city manager. The position was posted for over about 30 days, is posted nationally through a wide variety of different venues. We were pleased to have 23 applicants. Of those 23 applicants, we boiled them down to, actually, we had one time, we had 15 semifinalists. One gentleman actually pulled out and another person, actually, two pulled and one pulled because they got another position in another community. So in front of you this evening will be a process to take those 13 semifinalists and bring them down to finalists that you'd like to bring in for a face-to-face interview. And something maybe, if you can be thinking about this a little bit, well, first I'll be asking each of you to just give me your top three numbers, and then we'll just kind of add them up, and then we can have a discussion on who you'd like to bring in. But afterwards, I would be also seeing when to be the earliest you'd be able to come in for an interview on November 17th, when we'll be doing the interviews. And maybe kind of thinking about that a little bit. Traditionally, with the interviews, we do it with the panel of the council, would be a 45-minute interview, and we do those on the hour. So kind of thinking about if you want seven to people to come in, and if you don't start at 7 o'clock at night, we'll be there till 2:00 in the morning. So we just got to kind of think about, in a sense, from a logistical standpoint, on how you'd like that day to go. Also, we'd be recommending some kind of a staff panel, and I'd be working with the interim city manager. We can kind of work logistics out with that, and also a tour of the city to maybe combine with a lunch or something like that. So after we get down with the selection, I would just be asking for some input on how you'd like to see the interview day go. There's many ways of doing this. We would kind of recommend, once again, some kind of a full council interview, some kind of a staff one, and also with a tour. It seems to be a model that works very well. Something else, I have the mileage down for each one of your semifinalists, and something if you want to be thinking about too, when we get to that point in time, I can let you know where they'd be coming from, from those that you select, and if the council chooses or not to reimburse anything or not. Once again, there's nothing one way or the other. If you do have out-of-state folks coming in that you select, some communities will look at that. Traditionally, councils may give something forward for that, some kind of a stipend, but also want to make sure that that candidate has some kind of skin in the game, so you're not providing a free vacation in North St. Paul from somebody coming up also too. So it's well within your prerogative to do whatever you wish to do as a council, and other communities have been kind of all over the board. So I guess what'd be, in a couple of minutes here, I'd be asking if we can just kind of go down by council member, and I'll end with you and Mr. Mayor, and if you could give me your top three numbers that you'd like to see as those you'd like to bring in, and then once we have them all in, we'll tally them up, and once again, then we can have deliberation of how many folks that you'd like to bring in for a live interview.
Okay.
Any questions at all before we kind of start?
A quick question. Did you say November 17th?
That's correct. Wednesday.
Was that date agreed upon earlier, and I just happened to miss it? Because I'm not available.
That's the day we advertised in, when we came, yeah. That's what's gone off the candidates. I can see if you want to pick another day, what that would look like, but, and that's totally up to you guys. I mean, it's, so if you want to look at your calendars now, we could try to, I guess I'd recommend something after the 17th, just because we work a timing in for background checks and some of the things in the process. Would we like to do that now, or would you like to?
Let's go, let's go.
And I mean, if I'm the only one, then that's, you know.
Let's go through the process, and then we'll talk about it.
Okay, sounds good. So okay, if we start with Councilmember Peterson? Would you want to be on to tell me your top three? Yes, number, please.
13, 6, and 5.
All right. Councilmember Thorson?
Well, I had four.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sure.
I had 7, 13, 14, 5.
I guess I'll repeat these back to you, just want to make sure I get them right. So Councilmember Peterson, you had 13, 6, and 5?
13.
Okay. Councilmember Thorson, you had 14, 13, 7, and 5?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Wong?
11, 12, 4.
So you had 12, 11, and 4.
11, 12, 4.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Cole?
I had 11, 12, 7.
All righty. And Mayor?
I got 14, 12, and 11.
Okay. So one way we can do is we can start eliminating for right now, and if we need to go back, we can, but we could eliminate candidate number four, had just one vote, and then candidate number six, who also had one vote? And then we have six, we have, I'm sorry, we have two with three votes, number 12 and number 11. And then we had four candidates with two votes, number 14. One way we could also look at this, I just thought of this now, with Councilmember Thorson with four, is anybody else have a fourth candidate you'd like to add into the mix? That would make it maybe a little bit more, if folks had a fourth person? Would that be something? Okay.
You have four?
All right. So right now, we would have two, three, four, five, six, if you wanted to bring six in for a live interview. Otherwise, we could whittle that down. Once again, the top vote getter would be number 11 and number 12.
So what are the numbers? 11, 12?
So yeah, 11, 12 had three votes each, and then candidate 14 and 13, 7, and 2.
Five.
Five, sorry, five had two.
I don't see two on here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I'll repeat that again. So candidates 14, 13, 7, and 5 all had two votes.
Should we pick another one?
Yeah, I would say maybe, now, what I've done this in the past would be, is if those were the only, if you could only vote for candidates 14, 13, 12, 11, 7, and 5, if those are the only candidates you can choose, okay? And then you'd pick your top three from that. Does that make sense? So if you just kind of cross off, so right now, we cross off number nine, cross off number eight, cross off number six, cross off number four, cross off number three, cross off number two, cross off number one. So to repeat then, you would have 14, 13, 12, 11, 10, 7.
And no.
No, Tim's not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. 14, 13, 12, 11, 7, and 5. Of those six candidates, I'll ask you again if you want to tell me what your top three would be. Are we all on the same page?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do you need a little bit of time before I ask? Or does anybody have theirs ready right now?
I do.
Is that the Councilmember Cole? You said that?
Uh, yes.
Okay, sure.
11, 7, 11, 12.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
14, 5, and 7. Oh, 7 was one of them.
I'm sorry.
7?
Yeah.
7 was one of them.
Yep. Okay. All righty. Councilmember Thorson, you have your three?
I guess it'd be 14, 13, and 5.
Okay. Councilmember Wong?
11, 12, 5.
Okay. Mayor?
I'm sorry, 13. Did I lost them? 11, 12, 13.
Okay. Instead of 5?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Counsel, I'm Mr. Mayor.
11, 12, 14?
All right. So we're not any closer than we were before. So basically, for three votes, we had 14, 12, 11. Those three had three votes. And then two votes were given to 13, 7, and 5. So it's clear that we have our, what I see, they're clear for the top three. Now, the question would be, is if you want to bring in, so the top three clear ones would be 14, 12, and 11. Now, the question would be, is if council, if you want to bring in a fourth candidate, or fifth, or sixth, it's whatever within your, whatever you'd like to do.
I mean, I don't see a reason why six candidates, we wouldn't be able to look at them. To me, the more the better. Not more, but, you know, if we're all kind of thinking on the same page, you know, six, I think, would be okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with six.
Okay. Okay.
I'd bring in three.
You want to bring in three?
I was leaning maybe more towards four or five.
I don't, yeah.
So the top three right now are 11, 12, and 14, correct? So why don't we ask if this will work or not? 13, 7, and 5, each council member, what they would choose between 13, 7, and 5?
Sure.
Does that sound fair? Now, give us four.
Okay, ready? Okay. 13, okay.
13.
All right. Councilmember Wong?
13.
Councilmember Cole?
7.
And the mayor?
13.
Okay. It's four to one on that, so that would, if you looked at four candidates, it would be 14, 13, 12, and 11.
It's funny how they're all together there.
Yeah. And it was random assigning then the numbers, whatever, to. Okay.
Well, can I ask a question of the council?
Please.
So is the hesitancy to go from six, is it just a time constraint, doing it all in one day at 45 minutes? Is that the issue that people have without wanting to interview six candidates? Okay. And then Councilmember Cole has a conflict on the 17th, so I guess my question would be, is there any way we could split it up into two days, or is it just you want to do all the interviews in one day?
We can do whatever your wishes are for dates. The only thing I mentioned before, which is not insurmountable, was that what was posted in the, so, but it's a little premature to somebody take that day off if they know they're not going to be, it's more critical, once we set the date, than it is.
Because my concern is that, you know, this, you know, as we've seen, you know, people are actively seeking employment, and we've had two drop off. So if we limit ourselves to three in between now and the 17th, I mean, it's a couple of weeks away, or it could be farther away if we're trying to, you know, reschedule, what's the likelihood that one or two of those final three could potentially drop out, and then we're having to, you know, so I just think, in my opinion, if there's a hesitancy because of time, which I would agree, you know, six can make for a long day of interviews, if we were to split it up into two days and do three a day, because then, you know, it seems like we've covered our bases, and I have known the opinion with the mayor that interviewing a little more here at the final stage is probably better. But that's just my opinion, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in the past, we've had candidates drop out as you worked your way through the process, between this point in time and the final interview. It has happened. If, may I offer, if the council is available, would they be open starting like at 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon? And then we would be able, if it was, you know, six hours' worth of interviewing, in a sense, and then we'd do the stuff earlier in the day with the staff interview and the tour. I mean, it makes kind of a long day, but it is nice to kind of, if we can button it up in just one day.
So you're saying staff and council would be the same day?
Correct. But if we could, probably the biggest issue would be your availability to come during the middle of the day, you know, and I'm not for sure if that's even a possibility, realm for, if the council would be able to start interviews like at 2:00 in the afternoon or something, and then that would bring you into, you know, 8:00, or start at noon, and you're done at 6:00, or?
I want to be respectful of.
Absolutely.
Councilmembers' time, you know, they all work, work now, and.
And by all means, we can do it in two afternoons, too, whatever, that's.
You know, if we add one, you know, we could add one more, there'd be five. You know, pick between 7 and candidate number seven and candidate five. That'd give us five candidates. I don't know if I want to do two days, only because it's two days of time for council members, I know their jobs are. Councilmember Cole, is there a day that works?
I'm wide open the 18th. I'm looking to see if I can make myself available late afternoon of the 17th. I just sent a note.
18th, I am open.
I'm also open.
You got what?
League, no, League of Ministers. Our board meeting. On 18th.
Well, all due respect to everything else that's going on, this is a pretty important decision we're going to be making. So I think, you know.
17th works for me, good, but whatever you want to do, I'll be there.
Councilmember Wong?
I am available the afternoon of the 17th and all of the 18th at this point.
So the 18th?
If needed.
18th?
I'm available on the 18th.
18th will work.
18th works for me.
Let's do the 18th.
If I heard correctly, you're thinking five? Is that what I heard last, or do you want to?
I mean, I'd.
Six.
Four, fine with me, but if we want to add another one, that's up to the council. Either way, I know Cole wants three. Councilmember Wong, are you okay with adding one more?
I'm okay with that.
Councilmember, good with four, or add in one more?
Not with four.
With four?
I'm happy to add one more.
Okay.
I'll roll with the flow. I just don't.
Yep.
Sometimes too many is too many.
So between 7 and 5, why don't we go ahead and ask council members for one of those two?
5.
5, is that what you said? Okay. Councilmember Thorson?
Ah, boy.
Want to think about it, come back?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wong?
If you could come back to me.
Absolutely. Councilmember Cole?
Those were my, they were. Um, 7. Hang on, no, no, yes. Look at my notes. Yes, 7.
Mayor, who are you?
7.
I'm going to go with 5.
Well, it's split, isn't it?
Yeah. Drum roll over here.
You're thinking time on the 18th? What are you thinking?
Well, if we had five, so you figured simply five hours' worth of interviewing with the council, and then after they deliberate, after you're done interviewing, and then you'd have an opportunity to deliberate, and then to make your recommendation who you wish to have, so you'd have a special meeting after that.
But they're holding, you're also holding in the morning, probably, with the?
Or late morning, or something like that.
With the?
With the staff.
With the staff.
And the staff traditionally is about, it's about a half-hour interview that we do with the staff.
Okay. And they get a tour.
Yep.
If they want a break at some point, so maybe around 4:00 for us?
To start or to end?
What's that?
Is that 4:00 to start or to end?
Uh, start.
Okay. Would it be possible to go any earlier than that?
3:00?
I can meet any time in the day. I mean, if it earlier is fine. I mean, again, this is a pretty important thing, so can make it work whenever.
Yeah, Thursday, I can make myself, whenever we're available, we want to make it work. I just appreciate the flexibility for the 17th.
Councilmember Wong, when's the earliest you could meet?
On the 18th, anytime.
Okay. Mayor, are you earlier on that? I was thinking if we could possibly do like 2:00 or so, maybe? Then that way, it doesn't get too late in the evening if you want to deliberate and, okay.
Let's do two. Let's do two.
So we're, we're at.
2:00.
Well, what was the?
We don't know yet.
We'd have, okay, so we're at 11, 14, 12, 13, and we're still debating on whether or not to include a fifth, and which one that would be, you're correct?
Correct, yep, it's a tie vote between five and seven.
What did you say? Okay. Well, we're waiting, I got a question for you, so you say 45 minutes, roughly?
Yep.
Is there any way that can get condensed down to half an hour? Or is that too, not enough time? I mean, what?
Yeah.
In your experience, is, is that kind of the, the middle round, you don't want to go too short with half an hour, you don't want to go too long with an hour, I mean?
Correct, and I guess maybe to echo your, your sentiments earlier about, this is an extremely important decision, and, and I would send you a draft questions that we would have. Traditionally, they take about 45 minutes to answer.
Because I guess my concern is that, you know. If you give a candidate a timeframe, they'll just fill it, right? You know, and if we're trying to be concise, and.
Yep.
But we're not wanting to limit them. Is there, well, I mean, this is a public meeting, but it'd be nice to just not relay that this is a time limit here, where, you know, just so we're not. Because you can kind of get a sense for someone, too, if you ask them a straight question, and they answer it for 45 minutes, it's kind of like, all right.
Well, we set it up, we have a, well, we fill kind of time-tested proven questions, there's 19 of them that we have. So we start the interview with saying you have 45 minutes to answer 19 questions. It's incumbent upon the candidate to be able to talk concisely, because in the past, in other searches, sometimes we've had a candidate that spent 15 minutes on the first question.
Okay.
But they just don't get any, I mean, then they're the ones that have to learn how to speak concisely, and they're the ones that have to manage that.
Sure, all right, well, that makes sense, just asking out of curiosity.
Good question. Seven? Okay. All righty. So. We're all on the same page, the picks are seven. 11, 12, 13, 14. All the candidates that you chose are within basically the metropolitan area, so there would be no, no need for travel or expenses in that sense. I don't, unless you want to, I don't think you need, I wouldn't recommend you pay their mileage or anything like that, I mean, you're, you're close enough with the several of them.
Maybe we'll get them a snack, or something to.
Yeah, well, you'll.
Lunch, we'll have lunch here.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we should offer them lunch, or some, because it's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work that into the schedule when I work with staff to make sure we feed them and things like that, so.
Sure.
And then, so primarily with, with you folks as a council, if you're starting at 2:00, then you're going to be done at about 6:00, then when you're done with all your interviews. Have a little bit of a break in there, I don't know if you wish to have dinner or not, and then the, the, I can't speak here, the deliberation then on who you'd like to have. We have a recommended motion, that'd be part of it, at your meeting, and then be able to appoint a negotiation committee made up of a couple of council members. It finds that it's very helpful, that way then I will help assist you in that process of, to negotiate the, the contract based on what you guys want. But otherwise, instead of having to keep calling a council meeting every time, it goes back and forth, it just feels like it's a little bit more efficient use of time. And then eventually, when you do get something you agree on, it would be ratified by the entire council. So we have a little bit of time here, but between now and the 18th, if you can be kind of thinking about who, who you wish to appoint as one or two council members to, to work on that negotiation committee that I'd work with.
Okay.
Any questions, and I just work with a model contract from the League of Minnesota Cities, and also I would work with your, with, through Brian, with your city attorney also, just to make sure it's the agreement that you want as a, as a council that you'd ratify.
So it'd be two council members with the city attorney?
Yeah, whatever level you want the city attorney involved with, absolutely, whatever, I'll go on your lead on that, but primarily, it's just once you decide what you'd like, the main topics would be, you know, the, the salary, where they'd be in your accrual. Anything's like that, you know, whatever else that you would have that you deem is appropriate to have in that contract. Some cities have, and I can't remember what yours is right now, of a car allowance, or they just do the IRS, or, you know, there's different pieces in there. So we just use a boilerplate from the league, and then whatever else you'd like to have, and then make sure it, it meets the, your city attorney's approval, too.
Okay. It depends on the candidate, who, who that candidate is.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
All righty, any other questions at all?
Any other questions for Mark?
So what I will do is I will contact everybody this evening to let them know who's in and who's out. And then, just so you know, the next step for these candidates, now, they'll be public, their names, since the finalists are considered public information. I'll be sending information on their bios. Also, I'll be sending you down, we get closer draft questions for both the staff, I work with the staff on their draft questions. We have an interview guide of kind of questions you can and cannot ask, just to make sure everybody's kind of following the appropriate protocol for that. Then the candidates will do an intellectual profile, get a chance to see a little bit on some of their cognitive reasoning skills and some of those arena. And then also, we'll be doing a very extensive background check, that we use a third party called America Data Bank, that searches everything from credit history, all that stuff, the candidates will sign release forms for that. And then I'll do reference checking, and then the candidates also sign release forms for those also, so those will be sent out tomorrow. So we're just kind of working, I was keeping you informed in the process here, but now I'll be back to the candidates to start doing their information and their searching that they'll be doing.
Okay, good. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. Well, we're moving ahead with it, and. So we got 2:00 on November 18th. Everyone can put that in their calendar, that'd be great. Uh, city manager, Randall?
Thank you, Mayor, next up is the City of North St. Paul COVID-19 operational policy. Finance Director Winnick has been working on this, I'll turn it over to him.
Mayor, city council members. This item was brought last Tuesday in a draft form, it originated from the October 5th meeting. And there has been some revisions, and just got last night, which is not included in the packet, which I am going to share. Legal. Look at, at this, and they did have some additional suggestions. So in the packet today, you have a redlined version, those are changes since the last meeting on the 19th, and then a clean version, and then a resolution adopting it, but before we get to that. We really need to look at some of the suggestions from. The attorney, and then also any additional suggestions that you have for the policy itself. And they really come down to the section that's on the. Pandemic leave section onto it.
Do you have page number at all, or?
Yeah, but it, it's actually not in.
Oh.
Her, her, yeah, the changes that came from the attorney came last night, so they're not included in your packet, so I don't know if you can see this very well. I can kind of read some of the suggested changes, so. So there's some additional changes that are, that are listed in there in the first pack, underneath pandemic leave. The first section. Additional changes to it are to include that it can. That it can be eliminated anytime by council action has been added. And then. Took out the employees hired prior to the January 1st, and then employees hired after January 1st. The comment that the, the attorney is saying in this section is that it's kind of confusing. The intent behind kind of defining that was, the intent was to. Last year, when the 80-hour balance was put on for employees. Whoever used their balance up would get no additional time. And whoever had any balance left of their 80 would be entitled to use that moving forward for the pandemic. And then any addition, any new employee who wasn't hired prior to last year, when it sunsetted at the end of, of 2020, would be given a balance of 80 hours. That was the intent of how this was, was written. How the attorney is, is changing it no longer conveys that same message. So to me. It may be a little bit confusing, however, I wouldn't change the employees hired prior to and, and after. For that 80-hour bank, if that's the intention that we want to utilize for, for the, for the bank, for the employees. But I would add on by city council action.
Yeah, it's hard to see without. In front of. You going to read it to us?
So it would read. This leave will not be paid out if any employee terminates employment before the leave is utilized and can be eliminated at any time by city council action. I agree with that. Um, the red halfway up, yeah. How it had read was employees hired prior to January 1st, 2021, may utilize any remaining balance. Employees hired after January 1st, 2021, will be eligible for 80 hours of bank leave time prorated for regular part-time employees for sick use. The attorney is saying, get rid of a lot of that. Language of the employees hired and prior, and basically to simplify and say, everybody gets an additional 80 hours, has an 80-hour bank starting now. And, and there's been some staff discussion, and that's how that was formulated for. Not to give everybody a brand-new 80 hours, it was, if you haven't used it, that you get to, for the city to continue. Whatever remaining balance that they have, for those employees that weren't around, they would get a new 80, because they hadn't used anything at that prior, at that point in time.
It's not 80-plus.
Right, it's not 80-plus, right.
So anybody who has hours will keep those hours.
And can use it.
And any new employee.
Would get a.
Added 80 dollars, 80 hours.
Correct, would get a bank of 80. Just for COVID.
And those can be taken away, then?
Absolutely.
At.
Yes, they're.
Or during.
Yes, at any point, the city council can take that bank away. It also goes on later on to kind of talk about some of the changes that were, were made since the last city council meeting, was to emphasize. That you're not paid out. So if you were to leave employment, you, you're not entitled to what's remaining of those 80 hours, and being compensated for that. This is, this is an added benefit that the city council would be giving to employees. In addition to that, that. It, in, in later on here, in kind of the sections here, is, is that this would go into effect October 1st of 2021, so there's a little bit of a retro part of that, was that, that's about the timeframe that it was first identified. That we had a city employee that tested positive in this last round, so there would be an adjustment that could be made for to that employee's time record. But it also states that we will not go back. If somebody miscoded something last year, that maybe they coded sick time, and they could have used the pandemic leave underneath the federal, we're not going back and making any of those adjustments. So it's really to, to take your balance, if you're an existing employee, and allow you to use that moving forward. If you're a new employee, to give you the 80 balance like all the other employees had, had had. And we would put it to go back into effect on October 1st. At, that was the time, I believe, was pretty close to the, the first time that an individual had identified that they had, that they were positive for COVID.
And who's managing this? Is it Jenny, or who's managing the time?
The, the time will be managed through the payroll system. Obviously supervisors have to approve of the use of that time, based upon the policy. And then we'll run reports to make sure that no one's, you know, that, that they have, haven't exhausted their 80.
Being used for the purposes.
Absolutely, yep.
Councilmember Thurston?
So basically, to just summarize this in the layman's terms, because the federal government extended this 80-hour COVID sick pay. And now that's since expired, we're considering extending that. For those who haven't used it, correct?
That's, yes, that's correct.
And I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I do have an issue with this open-ended timeframe, I mean, I think. You know, my, you know, the, the, the emergency declaration lasted well over a year, and typically those are only supposed to last three days. So, you know, this, this open-endedness to this is a concern to me. But, you know, I, it'd be nice to see these attorney's comments, too, and they're not present, I don't know when.
Are they on Zoom?
It's hard to read that screen.
So I can, I can read the comments on that one section, like I, like I said, that it was. That they thought that it was a little confusing, that upper part. That was a little confusing, asked the question. Do employees still have access to the 80 hours of federal COVID leave that expire in December 31st, 2020? The answer would be yes, they would have, that's what we're suggesting here. Then they go on, if no, then how do employees access their remaining balance for a leave? If this policy is retroactive, it's not going to be retroactive, we're just allowing the, the extension of the use of the, the balance. And then her, the comment is, do we have a concern that somebody who had a COVID-related absence in 2020 and used all of their 80-hour leave is going to use it again for another COVID-related problem? That wouldn't exist on how this was written, because they've exhausted their 80 hours, they're not getting an additional 80 hours. Another comment, right there, when we look at the must-be-used-by-employees-illness-only. They're suggesting, and I believe, Councilmember Thurston, you had suggested this, too, and so we can adopt this, is to simplify. Instead of saying must be used for employee illness only, employees, we can insert onto there that you're, you are subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine, or isolation order related to COVID-19. And you have been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine due to concerns related to COVID-19. And so we can insert that language into this. And then on the October 1st date, just making the comment there of, do you, do you mean November 1st, and no, we want to go back, we do want it to be retro, going back at the, at the point where this was first identified. And then we shortly thereafter came to the first city council on the 5th. And then again on the 19th. And then the other bigger component for, for conversation. Is that we had discussion last city council. That we would allow the potential of a negative balance in addition to these 80 hours. She has stricken that language from there.
I guess that's what's confusing to me, because it seems like you're looking at something that's got the city attorney's comments, and then they're striking things, but I don't know if that's. know if that's reflected in what we're seeing here.
It's not.
Okay.
That's why.
So that's where I'm like, I don't.
Yeah, it's very, it's very confusing and that's right because this, their comments, I had sent them out last week. Their comments finally came back last night. So it's not included in in your packet. So I'm trying to be able to kind of explain the comments and the suggestions. And if the city council's okay, I'm okay with striking out a negative balance at this point in time and that's something that can be discussed further. I do believe there is an urgency to set some sort of policy because we've already had a number of cases that have been identified. And I don't want the negative balance to hold it up at this point. That's something that can be added at a future time. But I think it's it's very generous from the the city and and I think it reflects the importance that the city council has shown on employees and their and their, that they truly are an asset to the city and to making a policy of basically reinstating that 80 hours is is is, I think, in the right direction. And I think it's it's needed now and going back to that August or October 1st to when the first event was brought to, you know, the attention of the city, I think is warranted.
For clarification, did you speak to the attorney on the fact that, so if the city allowed negative hours, they would only be if the employee themselves were sick, not for taking care of family members that are sick?
Yes, correct. That was the the intention. However, part of her comment is that, you know, she recommends getting rid of the negative balance and just giving all employees, you know, the 80-hour COVID negative balance may raise issues that would need to be addressed through our collective bargaining agreements, which I I agree and which would take more time to be able to to fully vet out. So that's where I'm very comfortable in taking that that 80 hours at this time. That's something that could be looked at into the future. And again, the policy can be updated by the city council if that becomes a a need or or a bigger issue for for the city in the future.
So take that out.
To take that out, yeah.
Be nice to have something in front of us. But we don't. Councilmember Cole.
Negative hours, negative hours would mean, in how this policy is written, that you would have gone through your 80 hours of COVID pandemic leave time. You have, you do not have enough sick time accumulated and you start to go negative. And there's a lot of complications with allowing allowing that. In in other organizations, it's it's not known as going negative. It's known as, and there's forms that need to be signed and so forth, that you would do in advance. And it's usually in a vacation advance that you would would seek. But there are complications with doing such a thing. Because if in the event that an employee were to leave employment and had a negative balance, it's how do you collect that that money back from that employee, which the city is entitled to?
If it extends beyond 80 hours, why wouldn't it fall under either short-term disability or FMLA as opposed to the city continuing to?
Yes. Councilmember Cole, you're absolutely right. It definitely will fall underneath the FMLA. The short-term disability will be dependent whether that employee has short-term disability, which is a new offering that the the city is offering through open enrollment this year. Yes. And and again, you make some very valid points and that's where I think we can pull that language regarding the negative balance out because I think it's it's complicating, you know, the intent of what we're trying to do here. And that's something that could be looked at later on, but there are complications with it. And again, since the last time that we met, those were pieces that that discussions that I had had with our city manager that we really needed to define the use of that pandemic leave. And so I, my changes are shown in the original document that's in front of you. The attorney finally last night gave comments onto that and I I agree with pulling that language off of there.
If you guys don't mind, I mean, if you would like, we can get you a clean version. It's only a week to the next council meeting if you had time to review and if you wanted to okay it then with that, all the information in front of you.
I mean, we could make it next week.
Because we'd still be going back to October 1st and if we make any changes going retro, if anybody's sick between now and then, we could do it at that time if the, if you prefer.
Counsel, what do you?
Yeah, I don't like approving things that I don't have in front of me and haven't had a chance to read.
Table it.
Absolutely, I'm comfortable with that. Again, I apologize that that changes came in late last night. So yes, we'll get a clean version in front of you for next Tuesday night.
Yeah, so we'll we'll table this.
Yep.
Okay. City manager, Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is our purchasing policy. I'll turn that over to Finance Director Winnick.
Mayor and council members, and I need to get to. The policy that's in in front of you, again, was shared with you last Tuesday. There are some revisions. Nothing has changed since that in in what's in your packet. So you have a redlined version of changes of all of the changes that are suggested for the policy. And then there's a clean version. The only change that was made from what was presented last Tuesday is found on page 38 of 86. And in flowers, it's in parentheses, it's not for public purpose. So if it's for a public purpose, flowers are allowed to be purchased as one of the prohibited expenditures.
A question on that.
Councilmember Thorson.
So what, I mean, what defines a public purpose then? I guess that's where I was, my comment last time was that flowers was a little ambiguous in that it'd be more specific, like flowers, example, condolence flowers and celebratory flowers and congratulatory, like those types of things. Because when you say for a public purpose, I mean, that's kind of open-ended that, you know, it's. And I thought that this is all referencing the state statute that says like flowers aren't deemed appropriate purchase. But in the past, we have purchased flowers. Things like condolences and things that, from my understanding, don't fall into that category. But that's the reasoning that was given, that this serves a public purpose because this individual was whatever to the city. I mean, that's where it seems like it's just adding confusion on that to me.
I think in the past, it's out of policy if it was done. So now with the new, I guess, the new restrictions or whatever that you have, I don't think that's going to happen.
Sure.
Unless we, I have seen other cities do this. They have a donated account that people donate to and they can use that for public purpose then.
Sure. But I mean, everything falls under, I mean, not for public purpose, right? I mean, that's kind of, if if you spend anything that doesn't serve a public purpose, it's not allowed. So that's where it's just kind of like odd that that one item is saying not for public purpose. That's all.
And and Councilmember Thorson, you know, I agree. But in this, in this prohibited expenditures, alcoholic beverages, alcoholic beverages, even if they were for a public purpose, are not allowed. So.
Well, that's not right. No, I'm just.
And and so forth. So when you look at, in that vein, if you look at flowers and you're saying that it's intended to be anything that's not for a public purpose. So in other words, because because the example that you you gave last Tuesday, which was fantastic, is what about landscaping? And that's a public purpose. And so that was where the language to try to make a little bit of clarification would would be allowed if it was a landscaping part to it. But we didn't want to limit it just to the landscaping. We wanted to call it that, that a public purpose could be, you know, utilized for that. So not for public purposes is is kind of like excluded from the exclusion list.
I think we should look into adding a item where we can donate or the public purpose.
Absolutely. Many organizations, they'll call it like a sun, a sunshine fund. And periodically, employees are asked, you know, to donate to that. And then when when there's, you know.
Birthdays and.
Yeah, and when there's an event or unfortunately a passing of a family member or something that, then you can purchase on that behalf of the city, you can purchase flowers. And I think that's, you know, a very good idea.
We could talk about that later.
Yep.
Anything else that you changed in there?
Nope, that was the only change that was that was in the document itself.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember.
I did receive a correction from a resident.
Oh.
On page four of the updated purchasing poly, policy has a footnote, I guess the second one, it's referencing meals and refreshments. Section on page five, that section is on page four of the clean copy version in the packet. The only other reference she found to meals was on page three under guidelines for certain employee expenditures, first bullet.
Yeah, so the two footnotes, the on page, they seem to have dropped down to the next page. So the two footnotes, one and two, are actually shown on page five and then we can make that correction.
Very minor, but.
That's good.
Yep, nope.
All of it looks really great. Thank you.
I thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for Finance Director? Not motion to approve the purchasing policy with changes noted.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Wang. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. City manager, Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item on the city business action item is the 2022 budget discussion. I'll turn that over to Finance Director Winnick.
Mayor and council members, if you remember, in September 21st, we we had approved the levies for the general fund, HRA and Economic Development Authority. We have not looked at the internal service funds or the external service funds, the enterprise funds. And so we will be taking a look at those tonight. There are still some adjustments that need to be made to those budgets as we're moving forth here. Overall, the external, the enterprise funds right now look very good. I think we have one from a budgetary standpoint that has a a negative operating budget, that's the electric fund. And as we're all aware, the electric fund has quite the 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 fund balance that's in there. So, you know, so that's actually okay. We can operate with that and and actually will come from the fund balance. However, I will be working closely with the interim city manager in the upcoming days to kind of look at that budget and kind of adjust it a little bit. The revenues that are included in our enterprise funds are looked at very conservatively. As you can see, there's not much of a change from from 2021 to 2022, which means that we're not seeking any rate changes in any of our enterprise funds. And the enterprise funds, for the most part, followed the budgetary guidelines that were set forth for the general fund in meaning that many of the supply line items were held constant. And then there were increases for for known costs of increases as far as any contracted services. And then the salaries were projected based upon all of the salaries were projected for the city. And so we're we're seeing kind of the reflection of that. And so we can kind of look right now just at overall on the enterprise funds. Revenues exceed the expenses collectively as the whole group by $578,000. In the electric fund itself, I have presented tables here because you can actually see if you click on the expand all, you can actually see line item by line item with comparisons from 2016 all the way through the budget numbers of 2022 and both revenues and expenditures. And you'll see that for each and every one of the enterprise funds and the internal service funds. In addition, I believe Deputy Clerk had sent out today a line item spreadsheet or a line item for each and every one. That will be the format that we will use moving forward. This open gov that we're utilizing for transparency has a little, some complications. It's not that easy to actually print out line items. You can show it in in this type of a format. I did come up with a way that I can download the information and so I made an Excel spreadsheet format that I can cut and paste and get it to populate all of the line items. So that will be done for all of the general fund, for all of our budgets. So this was the first look at seeing those line items for the enterprise and the internal service funds. Good news, I think, overall, I it, I think it's a clear reflection that the rates are good right now for enterprise funds, which means that there isn't a need at this point in time, going into the 2022, that we need to do any rate increases. And so I think that's a very encouraging sign, especially in in the light that we did have a levy increase for the 2022. If there's specific information after I kind of do a high-level discussion on the enterprise fund, we definitely will will look into it. On the internal service funds, they're all pretty much set. You will see, I think, there's an exception of one of them has a slight negative balance. In other words, revenues are less than the expenditures. The rest of them are are very good. All of the numbers tie out to what's in in, as internal service funds, those charges go to other various departments within the city. They all tie out and those are, that's what we're looking at right now. And again, I think that that shows, you know, everything's been accounted for and there's no huge usage of fund balances from the internal service funds. In addition, in 2021, there actually was a transfer of $150,000 to basically make the mechanic fund, which was carrying a negative fund balance, to be positive. That's no longer needed going into 2022 and they do have a positive balance as we move forward. So again, I think at a very high level, our enterprise funds, our internal service funds look very, very good. In addition, to kind of remind everyone, we're still waiting on, which hopefully we we get here shortly, the tool that Baker Tilly is is helping us with, which will actually take each and every one of our budgets and extend it out for a 10-year period so we can take more of a holistic look for planning, no different than what we did with the CIP for the first time in looking at 10-year look. So as of right now, I think everything. So as of right now, I think everything is looking very good. I think it's, the keynotes to it are that we're not looking at any fee increases, and that we're not using much fund balance. And I believe on the electric, which is using a fund balance, that that will be corrected as interim city manager and myself have more of a discussion on those line items in that budget. Any specific questions or anything you want to look at in more depth?
Questions for Finance Director? Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I just was curious, I mean, I'm sure it must be somewhere in here, but I'm not totally familiar yet, but pulling up actual fund balances for each fund?
Mm-hmm.
As of, I mean, what's the, do you have them updated through quarter three of 2021 here? How up to date are some of these numbers?
Well, fund balances aren't shown in this documentation.
Yeah, not in this one.
Not in this case.
But, I mean, if...
But can I get the information to you? Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I mean, just saying in general, there's, there were updates that were put onto this open gov. And I, maybe I can't find it, I don't know where to look, but just, yeah, the actual fund balances in each one of these enterprise funds, and then, you know, I've brought this up multiple times, but just, I think it'd be beneficial for the council to explore having an established, like, recommended fund balance. Because, you know, if we're far exceeding that, one would naturally think we're overcharging and could do a rate adjustment downwards. And if we're far under, then it's something we need to look at as a rate adjustment upwards. And so just having that rough ballpark figure to work under, I think would make sense. Kind of applying that same fund balance principle for the general fund. I know it doesn't apply to these enterprise funds, but it, in my opinion, would be good business to follow that policy as well. And we've never really had that discussion on these enterprise funds, and what a average fund balance should be your goal. Are we far above or far below? So just kind of those kinds of discussions, I think, would be helpful. And then I had a question about, so the solid waste fund, we initially, we're going to pull some money out of that to pay for some projected expenses, and now that's, we've gone back to not doing that. And I think that's one fund in particular that we need to revisit and kind of evaluate, since we made that change to the new hauler and kind of revamped our fees. Are we overcharging, or are we, it seems like we're obviously collecting enough because the fund balance is increasing. And then what, you know, when are we going to start engaging in contract negotiations for that? Because I think it's nearing the five-year, when did we adopt that in 2019, I believe? And so we're coming up on year four. So what's the appropriate time to start negotiating? Is that kind of in year four, or do you wait till the end of year five? I mean, I...
So Councilmember Thorson, to kind of address a couple of components, first for the fund balance. The thought process on looking at the fund balance, first of all, the quick answer is yes, we will be having a discussion in the city council to talk about fund balances in the enterprise funds. The timing of it is really, wanted to wait forward to getting, wait to get that tool from Baker Tilly up and running, so we could take a really holistic look at it. A slight difference between the general fund in establishing the fund balance there and what we're going to do with the enterprise fund is really, the major difference is capital. Capital isn't included in the general fund. There's a separate fund, you know, that transfers are made from the general fund, and all of your CIP expenditures come from a separate fund that's not the general fund. So the enterprise fund actually will be paying for their capital. So we need to see how that looks with the new adopted CIP and in this form, to be able to establish what balance we should have. And so, in other words, we could look at it today and see that there's, I mean, just throw a number out, there's a $2.5 million fund balance. If we look out ten years, we may see that that fund balance may be down to nothing or very low, because of the capital expenditures that are going to be needed, which may, playing this "what if" with this new tool, we'll be able to look at, if we were to make rate increases, what would that do for the fund balance? That's really where the fund balance is going to come into play. Is there enough, is there going to be enough fund balance to adequately take care of the needs for each one of the enterprises on an individual basis? And that's how we'll try to establish it. But we really do need to have that tool up and running to have that dialogue with the city council. But that will be coming. As far as the solid waste at this point, yes. The $650,000 transfer has been removed from the solid waste. That'll be a separate item that'll come up with discussions on the community center into the future. Right now, how the solid waste fund looks is, it's pretty much, right now, this year, is pretty much a break-even point. So I think that's kind of showing that our rate is pretty much, very good with, from a budgetary standpoint, looking very good as far as the budgeted expenditures. Yes, there is a fund balance that's in there. Again, that'll be part of that discussion with all fund balances at that point in time. And then the contract for hauling, I believe it's entering into its third year of the contract, on that five-year contract. And yes, you definitely, before the fourth year begins, you're going to want to be having any discussions. And I think there was a clause that could be extended. But then again, you would want to have negotiations, and so you want to leave ample times in case you can't reach an agreement, that you actually need to go out for a full-blown RFP. So yes.
I'm assuming that's the new city manager, too, would be looking at that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Finance Director?
I had a quick one. Reference the solid waste fund that was put back into the general fund, or back into the funding and removed from being earmarked for the, our building downtown?
Community center.
Yeah. How does that, does, what does, I know how my budget works. I don't know how the city budget works when moving dollars around. So we recognize that if we move forward with the building, that there are expenditures that are going to need to be done. So removing that funding that's earmarked, what does that do to funds downstream to be able to do improvements?
The funds and the solid waste, the fund balance still remains to where it's at. It's just, it's been, the 650 has been replenished. In other words, from a budgetary standpoint, it's not being taken out. The city council can make the decision to still use that $650,000 and transfer it there. The last city council meeting, it was staff's recommendation to pull that out. We're looking at doing a complete facility assessment, and then bringing that information forth to the city council. It's staff's belief that that $650,000 that was identified for a number of items is not going to be enough. And so we wanted to make sure that we had the correct information. And then part of that, when we bring the information back forth to the city council for their review and any action, we'll also be making recommendations for where the funding sources would come from. And yes, the solid waste could still be on the table for potential funding of that.
So the, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Finance Director? If not, City Manager Frandl, anything?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Any updates? Do we have some that being poured?
It was supposed to have been starting to get poured today, actually, so, and I have not driven by there yet, so unfortunately, I can't give you that update.
They got the forums down.
Excellent.
I did see the forums down, so that's good. If not, motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Meeting adjourned.